The time is 6:30 and I would like to call this meeting to order. If we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lovell, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Reynis? Dr. Reed? Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Risaci?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Six members present and voting.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we do not have student board representatives here with us since it is summer. So we look forward to welcoming our new representatives when the start of school happens, probably much sooner than any of us had anticipated. It feels like summer is flying by. But now we are heading to an exciting portion of tonight's meeting. It's presentation and awards. And I know this is a few months late in honoring these students, but I'm really excited that we were able to make all the scheduling work so that you can come and be honored here this evening. So Superintendent Belizzi, I will pass this right along to you.
Thank you and good evening. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Greg Dirksen, who is the principal of Pontill Elementary School, to join me at the podium.
All right, good evening and thank you. As you did say, of course, it was, it is a little after the fact, but still, it doesn't in any way take away from the great accomplishment of these students. So as the principal of Pontill and as a representative for all the administrators in Wallingford Public Schools, I am honored to be here tonight to celebrate the ingenuity, resiliency, and accomplishments of two Wallingford students, Robert "Bo" Ballow from Rock Hill and Olivia Soto from Pontill, whose ideas became reality as they represented Connecticut and the town of Wallingford at the National Invention Convention in early June. What I think is so amazing about a young mind is that it is not defined by what can't happen. As an adult, I've been told no so many times, or decided for myself that it's just, that's how it is. That, that I can't get, you know, it gets in the way of having a new solution to any old problem or even a new problem. As I think somewhat of a silly and very timely example, yesterday, my youngest son, who is going to be a fifth grader next year, was trying to shove his hand inside of a pickle jar to get, of course, a pickle. And after many unsuccessful attempts, he finally grabbed it and said, "They need to make pickle jars have wider openings so that kids can grab them." Again, it sounds really simple, but this is an example of just that ability to have an opportunity to look at something in a different perspective that comes with a new mind. A pickle jar isn't just a pickle jar with a standard opening. Whereas I would have just grabbed a fork and tried to skewer a pickle, my son wants to alter it, wants to make it better. He approached the issue with openness to find a solution instead of just accepting that that's just the way it is. So from pickles, on to the amazing inventors that we have here today and how they looked at an old problem with a creative solution. And to best introduce them both, I want to share some numbers with you that are courtesy of Ms. Teresa O'Halla, who is with us today. But I want you to think about 11,000 and then 20. Because there were 11,000 inventions submitted in Connecticut and only 20 of those inventors and their inventions were selected to represent the state of Connecticut. Then some more numbers. I want you to consider 180,000, then 430, and then 2. Because there were 180,000 inventions submitted nationwide. Only 430 of those inventions and their inventors were chosen to compete at the National Invention Convention and two of them were at the time, fourth grade students and now, well, not even now, fifth grade students. They're now sixth grade students, but fifth grade students in Wallingford. It's pretty remarkable that we had two students represent the town of Wallingford and the state of Connecticut at the National Invention Convention. So I'd like to call each of them up here individually. I want to call you up, we'll congratulate you, then I just want to talk a little bit about what you invented and the reason behind it and my thoughts on it. Of course, because this is an amazing honor. So I first would like to recognize Bo Ballow from Rock Hill. Please come on up here, Bo. So Bo invented the snow density alert invention. That's correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, make sure I had the right title. And one of the best things about being a kid, and you can tell me if I'm right on this, in Connecticut especially, is a snow day. But one of the worst things being an adult is a snow day. Because that means that we have to spend all that time cleaning up outside and I never know what I'm supposed to do. Do I get the snow shovel? Do I get the snow blower? Do I hire the neighborhood kid to do it? Do I make my kids do it? Probably not going to do it. But Bo's invention helps make snow removal more manageable and safe. Because using this device, we all would know how, if the snow was heavy or light, before deciding if we're going to pick up that shovel to clear the path. Or, of course, if it's real heavy, I may hurt my back. And I don't want to hurt my back on a day I'm supposed to be, again, maybe getting outside to have some fun in the snow. Whether I should use the snow blower or use the shovel. So when I spoke to Rock Hill principal Lisa Carlson, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, the first thing that she said was how proud she was of you, Bo. The second thing that she said was that when you presented this idea and whether or not the snow was too dense, if it was and you weren't going to pick it up yourself, then you had to find someone with a snow blower who would do it. And that sounds great, because not only is this invention going to tell me what I should use, it's also going to come with someone who can clear the driveway for me, right? So congratulations to Bo on this amazing accomplishment. Nice job, Bo. Thank you. You can go back. At this time, I would like to welcome Olivia Soto up to the stage as well for her invention. So the last time I talked about Olivia, I'm just going to start off with this. It was during our promotion ceremony at Pontill. And while I was talking about Olivia, a bird landed on her head. Legit landed right on her head. She didn't even react. The crowd reacted. I didn't know what was going on at first. Looked over, she was so calm, stoic. It was, it was pretty incredible. So before we even talk about her invention, know that that happened and everyone should know that. So Olivia's invention is the Remarkable 4.0. If you're like me, you enjoy nature and also probably spent a lot of time in your childhood trying to recreate the colorful world around you, especially with markers. Because the crayons, I mean, the wrappers were all ripped off, broken. You couldn't find them. Markers were the best way to go. If you're also like me, you probably left the caps off of many of them. The color dried up and you had to buy new markers, which meant you threw away the old ones and the plastic, adding to the damage of the natural world that I love so much. Olivia's invention gives us all the freedom to color our blue oceans, our green trees, our yellow suns, without harming the environment. Because she created markers that allow for the colors to be removed when dried up and replaced with new fillers. If we all colored our pictures with Olivia's markers, we could use our brilliant colors to help keep the world as vibrant as well by not disposing of these plastic shells. Olivia's Remarkable, Remark-er-bul, sorry, 4.0 earned her a third place finish in her grade level category at the National Invention Convention, which is amazing as well. And of course, I have to say, congratulations to Olivia on this remarkable accomplishment. Thank you, Olivia. Just in ending, congratulations again to both Olivia and Bo. Your creativity and grit in the face of a problem is an inspiration to us all. And we look forward to your continued efforts to make the world and those around you better through your example. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dirksen, for sharing that. And I just wanted to say quickly, congratulations to the both of you. What an incredible accomplishment. You should be so proud of yourselves and all you have done, as we are very proud of both of you. So keep on inventing and creating and we wish you all the best in the future. And congratulations, what a wonderful opportunity for you guys to go there and experience that and represent us here. So congratulations again, enjoy it.
Thank you. And I have to tell you, I'm so happy that your family members were recording this. Because those numbers might not mean anything to you now, but in a couple of years, when you think back to what you've accomplished, I hope you can feel as proud then as you feel now in this moment. It is quite an accomplishment. We are so proud. I know several of us board members got to experience on a local level judging some of the Wallingford competition. And we were pretty blown away at that level. So I can't even imagine what it was like on a state and national level. So congratulations. This is no small feat. We're super proud of you. So thanks for being with us and for bearing with us as we found a good date. And thank you, Mr. Dirksen, for the way that you spoke about these students. And you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave. It is summer and a semi-nice night out if you would like to go and enjoy, by all means. Okay. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and read this public comment statement. "The Board of Education welcomes you to our meeting as we always look forward to public input. Before we begin, I would like to review the process of comment and questions for this meeting. These terms are per policies 9323 and 1120. Public comment is intended for the Board of Education as an entity as individual board members do not have decision-making authority. Public comment is intended to allow citizens to comment and ask questions and these will either be answered during this meeting or at a later date by the superintendent if additional research is required. We ask that everyone behaves in a respectful way that sets an example for the students that we all wish to serve." So with that, go ahead and come on up to the microphone. And if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Bowe. I live at 8 Perkins Drive in Wallingford. In my day job, by the way, I'm the Assistant Dean of Engineering at Quinnipiac University. And hopefully, if our young inventors see this when they watch it back on YouTube, I invite them to come join me in about seven or eight years and we'd love to have them at Quinnipiac. I'm reminded that achievements like that these young people completed are only possible through pull-out step, which only 30 days ago was not a certainty for the children of our school district. And I'd like to thank the board for working toward that to help to make sure that step remains a vital part of our children's education in Wallingford. To that same end, I'm speaking to a nearly empty house and just the folks here to remind you that we're all still here. The parents are still here. We still care very much. And although not everybody can always attend, we ask that you continue to do your hard work that we appreciate on behalf of our kids. And of course, as the new president of the Lyman Hall Music Parents Association, I'm in my, I don't know, starting my 12th year, I think, of having a child in Lyman Hall Marching Band. I've been a parent in this school district for well over 20. And we need your continued support for things that go beyond the bare state minimum requirements. Music and the arts is and are one of the only places where students from every stripe and background, from socioeconomic opportunity, from different ethnic groups, folks from all over the spectrum come together to participate, to build community and to be one. There are no cuts on the chorus team. Strings are open to all, whether you own a violin or not. If you want to be in band or Color Guard, it is there for you. And in order to help maintain these robust programs at the high school level and the middle school level, we've got to continue to support this and think long and hard before taking away any kind of music requirements in middle school. Educators and laypeople know alike that there are strong correlations between those who study music and those who excel in math and many quantitative STEM fields. And I'd hazard to guess that our young inventors probably play music as well. That as you go through in good times and tough times economically and you have to make smart decisions, remember that it's not always just the bottom line, but what's going to be better for all. What's going to help create community to support students who are often disconnected because on their own, they might just be locked on their screens. But when they're in the musical, when they're in the chorus, when they learn to play strings, or they're in the marching band or Color Guard, they're a member of a larger community. And that's what's really going to make an impact in these young people's lives. They're not going to remember that algebra problem, probably. The inventors might. But they're going to remember the community that they built in the schools and that these programs allowed for them. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your hard work. And I ask that you keep that in front of mind. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda, there has been a request to have item 7.2 removed. So I would like to make a motion for items, to accept the consent agenda items 7.1 and then 7.3 through 7.5, if there's a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions that motion carries. So now heading to our next item, items removed from the consent agenda. That was item 7.2. And it was the approval and acceptance of the special education meeting minutes from June 18. And there was a request from an administrator to change some of the wording. So the way it's currently written in our minutes, and I believe that Mrs. Lovell did go back and listen to this and confirmed that this is the way that it was stated. It's from a public comment section, Ms. Kim Hardy. She, the request has been made to remove the second sentence. Ms. Hardy was speaking on behalf of the World Language Department. And maybe it can be changed. My suggestion would be to change it in support of the World Language Department instead of making it seem like she was speaking for the collective. We can just refer to it as "support of." Am I being clear on how I'm saying that?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any? Taking out "on behalf of" and adding "in support of"? Just to change the context a little bit? Superintendent Belizzi?
Correct. Sorry. So it was just a suggestion. The administrator had requested that the whole thing be removed. This person is a retired Spanish teacher with the Wallingford Public School System, is a resident of Wallingford, and so then can come and speak. But I think it gives a little, it potentially may give a little connotation that she's speaking for the entire department or on behalf of the department. And so who is no longer, you know, she's no longer an employee with us. So the suggestion would be to maybe do it as "in support of" instead, because she was speaking to address and support her former colleagues. But, you know, that's something you guys can think about as to if that's something you agree to.
Mrs. Passeretti?
I just have one question. Is this particular statement a direct quote, a direct quote from Ms. Hardy? Or is this interpretation, is this a summary of what was presented?
Mrs. Lovell, I know you listened to it again today.
She did say that she was speaking on behalf of the World Language Department. But the minutes are, they can, you know, be a summary of what they were trying to say.
I, okay. I would be in favor of making the edit as long as we're making an edit based on the summary of what was said and not editing a quote.
I understand where you're coming from. And it is recorded and so the recording will stay as is and is exactly, it is a representative of exactly what she said during public comment. And so we do have that little bit of leeway to just summarize minutes. But I mean, I understand where you're coming from as well. And the recording, if you went back and watched the video and watched that piece, will stay exactly the way it is. We will not make any changes to the recording.
Or maybe a better way for me to say it is, as long as we understand that this is not a transcript of what was said, this is a summary of what was said.
Is there any other discussion on this? No, okay. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes with the amendment to say "in support of" the Wallingford Language Department compared to how it is written right now, saying "on behalf of."
Do you mind stating the entire?
Sure.
Sentence as the new, the new wording?
So the new wording would be, Ms. Hardy was speaking "in support of" the World Language Department?
Second.
All those in, is any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you. Mrs. Passeretti? I will pass this to you for our correspondence.
Thank you. I have two pieces of correspondence tonight. The first is an acknowledgement of an in-kind donation in the amount of $25,000. This is a donation from Masonic Care Healthcare Health Centers and their assistance in support of the Wallingford Adult Education CNA program. Our students receive their clinical instruction at Masonic Care and Masonic Care is, their support is just integral to our CNA program. So we are very grateful for all that they do for our students and we gratefully accept this in-kind donation. Next, you know, you all may remember that unfortunately, this summer, we lost one of our Wallingford Public School District's employees, Donald Comstock. And we received a thank you note from his wife, Barbara. It says, "Thank you for sending the beautiful arrangement and fruit. Your kindness meant so much." And it's signed Barbara and family. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Passeretti. Moving to item number 10, we are looking at our committee reports now. And I know we will not have an ACES report. I know, Mr. Ross, you were in the hospital during this meeting and I'm so happy that you are feeling better. And I know you'll be raring to go to attend that next meeting and report back to us. So happy that you're here, feeling better, and we look forward to that next report. Mr. Dearing is our CAEB representative and he is not here with us this evening, so I just have his written report. CAEB will be hosting a webinar series that is very much related to school finance. It's a series of three. They are also hosting a conference for new board members, which will be on August 8. And on September 3, CAEB will be hosting, oh, that's, excuse me, on the 8th of August and September 3. And then on the 15th and the 16th of November, there'll be the CAEB and CAPS convention. And all of the signups for any of those webinars are available on the CAEB website. And I have to say, CAEB has amazing resources for us here on the Board of Education, always putting out new information. I tuned into some about finance and budgeting to help to prepare. We're always thinking about that, fortunately or unfortunately, helping us to get ready for a more successful budget year. So really appreciative for those resources. We do not have any old business, so moving right through, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. We are in executive session. Hello and welcome back. We are out of executive session. Moving on to item number 13 on our agenda, it's our instructional committee reports. Mr. Votto and Dr. Reed, I'm going to pass this over to you.
13.1, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for the superintendent of schools.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you want to do a roll call?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, roll call. What happens when you get screwed up?
Okay. Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynis?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Risaci?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
And Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. My second motion is to make, to approve the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Special Education.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Lovell?
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynis?
No.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Risaci?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
Dr. Husco?
Yes.
Motion carries.
13.3, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Lovell?
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynis?
No.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Risaci?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
13.4, I make a motion that the board accepts, accepts the approval of the business manager's contract.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Lovell?
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynis?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Yes.
Yes? Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Risaci?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept the contract of the Food Service Director.
I second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Lovell?
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynis?
No.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Risaci?
Yes.
Mr. Votto?
Yes.
Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. 13.6, approval of acceptance of resignations. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Ava Sahajan effective July 19, 2024.
Second it.
Ava has been an elementary teacher since August of 2023. Oh, I should have said. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education to accept the resignation of Louis Petrucci effective July 22, 2024. Louis has been a mathematics teacher since August of 2013.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Renee Hafner. Renee has been a special education teacher here since 2022.
Second it. Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, 13.7. I'd like to make a motion at the Board of Education, approve the schedule of meetings from February 2025 to January of 2026.
Second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Abstentions? Motion passes. That's it. Mrs. Chairperson?
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 14. Mrs. Regan, Mrs. Reynis, we have our operations committee report.
The operations committee has not met, so there is no report.
Oh, yes, the summer hours.
Yeah, so we're like, yeah.
Perfect. Great. Nice and quick. Love that. Thank you. Now we're going to move to our administrative report. Superintendent Belizzi?
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm going to share just a few updates, as many of you know, because you were, many of you were there. We did hire a new principal for Kokel Hill Elementary School. His first official day was today, so we welcomed Mr. Zachary Monroe to the elementary principals. So we are eager to start working with him and welcome him to the district. Just a few reminders about a principal meet and greet, so we did select some dates. So the staff meet and greet is going to be Wednesday, August 14th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Kokel Elementary School. And then for students and families, the meet and greet will be Wednesday, August 14th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. We will send out reminders. As it gets closer, we'll make sure that we send it out to all staff and all families, and especially the Kokel families. But I do know we will continue to make sure we message that out to everyone so they can meet him. He is eager to get started and join the group. Just a couple of other things before I get into these. One last thing that may take a little bit longer to explain, I just want to go over some dates. We've been working this summer to kind of prepare for the start of the school year. Once it ends, we start preparing already for the start of the next year. So we are working on new teacher orientation, which will take place with Dr. Thompson and all of us on Friday, August 15th. And then we'll get right into welcoming our administrators back for a full week of professional development, the week after that. And then we have our teachers and our certified staff come back on Monday, August 26th, for three days of professional development before school begins, the first day being Thursday, August 29th, for our K through 12 students, and then for our preschool students, it is Wednesday, September 4th. I feel like it's going to be here before you know it. And so I just wanted to highlight some of those dates as well for those watching. One other piece I wanted to highlight, I did share out with all of you and with the administrators, some changes in the legislation from this past May. One of the things I wanted to highlight was the change in the non-lapsing 2% account. So it's been a recent change. It's Connecticut General Statute 10-248A. And it's specifically relating to this 2% account is the, they expanded the capabilities of how the unexpended education funds can be handled. So as of the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2024, and for fiscal years going forward, local boards of education can deposit any unspent funds from the prior fiscal year into this non-lapsing account. So a lot of the limits still pertain in terms of, the limit in terms of that it cannot exceed 2% of the total budgeted appropriation for education. Any, the usage of the funds, any expenditure from this account must be solely for educational purposes. And the authorization piece is something to highlight, that each expenditure from the non-lapsing account must be authorized by the local board of education. So what this change in legislation does going forward is that it takes out the piece of us having to go to the town for the final approval for unexpended funds. And so going forward, I just wanted to highlight those changes. This year, Mr. Barone and I had spoken, I spoken to Dr. Roscoe about this as well, that this fall, we'll continue to do the practice we have always done, the one that exists currently, with going to the town with our unexpended funds and requesting the transfer to the 2% account. But after this year, it is on the local board of education prior to the end of the fiscal year to make that decision. And so that is a change. My plan is to send a memo to Mayor Savoni tomorrow and to Chairman Marone, so that it can be shared with all of the council members, so that they're aware of that change as well. But we felt that it would be respectful for us to at least continue with the way we've always done it, because this change has come such at the end of June, and it was no time for you all to make that decision to transfer the account. So we'll stick to the way we've done it always, and then make that change going forward, starting next year. Any questions? About that change?
I just have one question. So we are able to make that change, but we're not going to do that?
So according to the change in legislation, local board of educations can do it. But after talking to our legal counsel, we would have had to have made that motion. You all would have had to have a meeting to make that approval before June 30th, before the fiscal year ended. And so we didn't do that?
Okay.
And so with the quick turnaround time and our ability to do that, and being able to explain to everyone that the change is happening right now, and we're going to do it right now, we felt that it would be best to follow the existing practice for right now, and then next year, we'll make that change.
So is that a change internally through you all, or is that something the board makes? We make as a board, do we vote on that as a board?
You'll make it as a, the board will vote on that.
So why didn't we know about the change in law before?
So we did know parts of it, but it officially came out late in, in terms for us to then turn around and make that change, and make everyone aware of that change. So I didn't want to go ahead and make the decision for us to go ahead and make the change without having a discussion. And so in consultation with our legal consultants, I felt that it was best that we stick with the existing practice, make everyone aware of what the change is, and then going forward for next year, implement the new change.
Okay. I just think it would have been better to let the board make the decision to continue to keep on making the change. It's just a shock to me that there was a lag time, and if the decision should have been made by the board, I just don't feel comfortable when decisions are just kind of...
So the decision has always been that any unexpended funds we then, because the money is the town's money, so it goes back to the town. And so until, the process has always been that we go in the fall to request those funds to go to the 2%. And so that's kind of where we left it, to follow that existing process that it always has been according to the town charter.
Particularly have a problem with that, but if there was an opportunity to maybe discuss a different option or a different process, I think it just would have been nice as a board to have been notified of that and at least have, let us make that decision. Rather than after the fact. It's just, I'm a little unsettled by that.
Superintendent Belizzi, maybe you can speak to the amount of days that actually existed between when the legislation rolled out to when we would have had to have voted? Because I know that that was one of the main deciding factors, that there wasn't enough time to be able to responsibly and respectfully have a board meeting? And so it wouldn't, so maybe you can speak to that, and maybe that will help with some of the unsettled feeling that Mrs. Reynis has.
Correct. So for us, it was the last week in June, so it would have given us about two days to probably hold a board meeting potentially on a Friday evening in order for everyone to make that decision. In addition, we have board policy that would also have to have been suspended in order to make this change. So there's two things that were happening. We have the change in the legislation, but we also have a 2% non-lapsing account board policy that indicates we need to go to town council to have that approved by them in order to retain those funds and transfer them into the 2%. So given that we had a limited amount of time to make that decision, that is why the decision was made to continue to do it this way, and then going forward, change it, change the process, so we're better prepared for the end of next year. The other piece of that with our policy for the 2% non-lapsing account, we'd have to also go back and bring that back to the policy committee to have that one revised, so that it matches the legislation that's current.
I can't, I read it, which you sent us, but I can't remember now. Is it stipulated in there what we can spend it on? Is it always our decision to spend it on the one-time, you know, big-ticket items?
So now it's kind of broadened up a little bit from what it was. So it says it aims to provide more flexibility for the financial stability for local boards. It allows the boards to manage the resources better. And I do believe that it's, again, the, it has to be educational purposes. Whereas before, I think it was always just capital items. But now it's educational.
So we have a little more leeway?
Yes.
That's kind of wide.
So if I understood you correctly, the policy, the policy committee will be discussing this?
Right, so the policy, it will have to go back to the policy committee to be revised, to match the current legislation.
It's my understanding that no matter what is in our policy, that the legislation supersedes our policy.
So not necessarily. Board policy sometimes is more stringent. And so you would have to, as Ms. Belizzi said, you'd have to suspend your policy for an indefinite amount of time to be decided by the board if you're acting differently than your policy states. So it is on the policy agenda for August to start the school year. That way, when Ms. Belizzi and Mr. Barone hit the town council in the fall with the unencumbered fund balance, if that's the will of the board, they would be able to discuss the changes in the legislation and board policy to make everyone aware.
Okay. I'm just confirming that they're, that's consistent with the timeline that's been explained, that there wasn't enough time. Okay. I'm just making sure that everything, that that was consistent. Thanks. Just one more question. So historically, with the 2% fund, has the town granted us what we've requested for the funding? So it wouldn't have really made too much of a difference the way you did it for this year?
Correct. Historically, we have received the funding. Typically, what happens is, it's usually, I would say, October sometime, late September, excuse me, beginning of October. And what happens is, we'll share what the unexpended amount is. We'll share what's currently in our 2% with the town council members. We go over exactly where we're spending that money, what's unallocated, what is allocated. And then we detail what we are allocating this money towards for town council. So yes, typically, they do allow us to transfer this money into the 2% account.
And Superintendent Belizzi, this might actually be a question for you, Mr. Barone, but can you tell us an anticipated number that you expect to have in the 2%, a ballpark of what you think could be in the 2% fund when it goes before the town council? Or the, yeah, the amount.
Not what's in the 2%, you're asking how much?
Yeah, 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 sorry, the amount that we, not what's in, but the amount that we would, our surplus, that we would be requesting to maintain.
I think $40,000 to $50,000 roughly. Forty to $50,000.
Thank you. Is there any other question or discussion on this legislative update?
I guess I would just add
Of course.
That I think the other thing that the, we got, we heard from legal was that, you know, the, the old fund, we may need to create a new fund, and we need to iron that out too, versus, I know co-milling is not a good word, but like, instead of taking the new money that the board approves and putting it into the same funds. We, there are some things that we have to iron out, but I think all in all, it's, obviously, it's a great move for us.
Thank you. Does that conclude our updates? Perfect. So this brings us to the date of our next meeting, which will be Monday, August 26th. So crazy how quickly the summer is flying by. That will be at 6:00 p.m. right here in the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers. And with no other business to come before the board, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.